Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Pat Rowe is excused, his flight was canceled and he is probably touching down in Newark Airport as we speak, so we may see him later. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see such a great turnout for Introduction to the Budget. We have no minutes for approval, so I will go into my comments, again welcoming everyone. A few things I want to cover before I come down and share some proclamations. One, our Employees of the Month. Officer Luis Goncalves and Sergeant Joe Longo at Madison Police Department for assistance to a 95-year-old resident whose only contact with the outside world, her phone had stopped working. They purchased a phone for her, installed it, transferred her contacts from her old phone, and instructed the resident on how to use it. This was truly service above self. And if you see them out on the street, please thank them, and that's just an example of what our employees do on a regular basis, going well beyond. And another Employee of the Month we want to recognize, we're going beyond, is Russ Brown, Construction Official. His assistance to Madison Police Department with the expansion of their evidence room. With his expertise, the door was cut into the existing masonry wall, a door frame and metal gate were installed, and the evidence room was expanded into existing storage space, saving the borough thousands of dollars for his work. And he has kind of adopted this building, on a regular basis does extra projects in this building. And we have two anniversaries. One, 25th anniversary to Robert Califford, working here. And just can make a joke about working with auditors, it must be 50 years, no, audited years, but our auditors are in the audience, right? But Robert, thank you for 25 years of service to the borough. He is second here. And Christine Schlesser of the Health Department, also celebrating 25 years. That was celebrated last Monday, March 1st. Also, if you were here two weeks ago, we saw the proclamation for Read Across America. And I had the opportunity to go to Central Avenue School to read to Mrs. Gibbons' second grade class. I have got a stack of some great letters, I'll just read you one because it just was... It is one of the most fun things to do as mayor, is to go out and read to second graders or anything like that. And I read Maisy with a Daisy in Her Head, a Dr. Seuss book, and The Incredible Book-Eating Boy. And here is one of the letters. Dear Mayor Connolly, thank you for taking the time from your day to read to our class. You read awesome stories. Please come again and read to us again. I liked when you talked about what it's like to be mayor. I think you should be mayor of New Jersey. I don't know if that'll... It was also very nice to give us the business card. I also noticed in both the books, they had a lesson. Once again, it was nice of you to read to us. Signed, Cameron. So it was very, very nice and a fun thing to do. And speaking of reading, announcement from the Madison Public Library. Will be closed for approximately one week, beginning March 24th, for asbestos abatement in the lobby ceiling. This work is necessary in order to prepare for the installation of the HVA C system later in the year. The public library cardholders are reminded, they are welcome to use libraries in all of Morris County communities, as well as the Burnings Township Library and the Morris County Library. During this time period, activities scheduled to be in the Chase Auditorium, including the Drew Mini Courses, will be held as announced. And you can check the website, the library's website, for updates. And again, that's starting on March 24th. And don't worry, the work that is being done, the asbestos is intact, but it's in the way of them being able to do cuts into the ceiling and all that, so that's why it has to be removed at this time. I have a few proclamations. Just one, we know as attendants to collect this first one, so I'll just cover it from here. Colectural cancer awareness. Third, most commonly diagnosed cancer, colon cancer and rectal cancer. It accounts for 10% of all cancer cases and deaths in Morris County, of cancer-related deaths in Morris County. 39% of the patients could have their cancers detected at an early stage. And the survival rate when this is detected early stage is 90%, which is why there are over 1 million colon cancer survivors in the United States. 5% of those diagnosed later will have cancer spread to other organs. If the majority of people in the United States age 15 or older were screened on a regular basis, the death rate from this disease could plummet by up to 70%. So we're declaring March 2014 as colectural... Thanks, sorry.
Did you say colon?
Colon and rectal cancer awareness month. I don't mean to make light of it, but as someone who's over 50, I recognize the importance for early screening, no matter what. And I've got to work on my words here. All right, I understand we have some young playwriters in the audience. Please come forward, and also the staff from the Playwrights Theater. We have Jennifer DeWitt, Marketing Manager. Please come on up, all our playwrights, come on up here. All right, we have a special proclamation for you, and then we're going to ask you to tell us a little bit about your play. And if I try out for your play, I will practice my lines, so I can read it when I get there. Proclamation of the Borough of Madison proclaiming March 2014 as Madison Young Playwrights Month at Playwrights Theater in Madison. Whereas Playwrights Theater, founded in 1986, has nurtured creative writing skills for all ages through the New Jersey Writers Project, co-sponsored program of the New Jersey State Council on Arts and the Department of State. And whereas, Playwrights Theater has produced performances and offered new plays to local and statewide audiences as a result of its dedication and perspective playwrights. Whereas, Playwrights Theater brings a unique program to communities through its local in-school playwrights initiative, the Madison Young Playwrights Program. And whereas, Playwrights Theater present performances of student-written work during Madison Young Playwrights Festival, to be presented in schools on March 19th, 20th, and 28th. And whereas, Playwrights Theater has continually received a positive response from students, teachers, and parents for its effectiveness in working with all students, many of whom have realized the benefits of self-discovery and expression through playwriting. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as Madison Young Playwrights Month. In doing so, I extend very best wishes to Playwrights Theater and to all the young writers within our community for continued growth and success. Further, I encourage the public's participation to attend the performances and to commend our young playwrights for their creativity and artistry. And we'll give you a chance to share your play in just a second. As if they want to see the plays, how can they see that? Do you know the...
Well, they'll be done at the individual schools, so check with your children's school calendars, or you can also check with us, and we can give you the date and time.
Okay, so we'll start over here, and I want you to state your name, the school you go to, and the name of your play. And then you can hand the microphone to the next person.
My name is Francesca Wan. I'm from St. Vincent Martyr School. And my play is called Lost in the Wood.
My name's Natasha Wan. I go to St. Vincent Martyr School. And my play is called Lost Alone.
My name is Zachary Vincent. I go to St. Vincent Martyr School, and my play is Teacher Days.
My name is Joanna Izzo. I go to Central Avenue School, and the name of my play is Panzi's Park.
My name is Artha Basinhua. And I go to Torrey J Sabatini School, and my play is called The Stapler's Revenge.
My name is Charlotte Sullivan. I go to Torrey J, and my name is called Rising from the...
My name is Kira Collins, and I go to St. Vincent Martyr School, and my play is called Not Boy.
My name is Catherine Brown. I go to Kings Road School, and my play's name is Girl's Best Friend.
My name is Lauren Massey. I go to Kings Road School, and my play is called Playground Drama.
My name is Joanna DePaolo. I go to Kings Road School, and my play is called Anything for Cancer.
My name's Natalia Arena. I go to Kings Road School, and my play's name is That Bad Night.
My name is Caroline Fabiano, and I go to Kings Road School, and the name of my play is Candy Wars.
Thank you so much. There should be some great plays. Parents, you want to get a quick picture? Anyone that... Yeah? Okay, I see. Head on back, good job. All right. New Jersey will be holding Special Olympics USA this year, so we have some Special Olympians in the room will be coming up. And we also have some representatives here. Betty Lunn, Area 3 Director of the Morris Sussex and Warren County Special Olympics. And Frank Shapiro, member of the Special Olympics Committee. And Peggy Cox, our Special Education Teacher at Madison High School, please come forward. And if we have our athletes also, from the junior school and from the high school, Sarah Johnson, Andrew Leung, Daniel Morales, Jackie Shepherd, and Jeffrey Woody. All right, come on up and turn around and face the audience. Sarah, that's good, right there. All right, we have a proclamation from the Borough of Madison welcoming the 2014 Special Olympic USA Games to New Jersey. Whereas, Special Olympics is an international organization that unleashes a human spirit through the transformative power and joy of sports every day around the world. And whereas, through work in sports, health education, and community building, special education is addressing inactivity, injustice, intolerance, and social isolation by encouraging and empowering people with intellectual disabilities, which leads to a more welcoming and inclusive society. And whereas, founded in 1968 by Eunice Kennedy Shriver, the Special Olympics movement has grown from a few hundred to nearly 4.2 million athletes in over 170 countries. And whereas, with the support of more than 1 million coaches and volunteers, the Special Olympics is able to deliver 32 Olympic-type sports to more than 70,000 competitions throughout the year in national and international competitions. And whereas, New Jersey has been selected to host the 2014 Special Olympic USA Games, which will take place June 14th through 21st, 2014, with the venues throughout Mercer County, including Princeton University, Rider University, College of New Jersey, Lawrenceville School, Hunne School, the Petty School, Sun National Bank Center, and Mercer County Park, and the Brunswick Zone Collier in Middlesex County, followed by opening ceremony, following the opening ceremony Prudential Center in Newark. And whereas, the 2014 Games will feature nearly 3,500 athletes competing in 16 Olympic-style sports with the support of 1,000 coaches, 10,000 volunteers, an estimated 70,000 family and friends and spectators. And whereas, the 2014 USA Games will showcase 270 Special Olympic athletes from New Jersey competing in this national event. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, wholeheartedly support the work of the Special Olympics, and we welcome into New Jersey all the athletes, families, coaches, officials, and volunteers who will make these 2014 USA Games a tremendous success, and congratulate all who live by the motto of the Special Olympics. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt. Congratulations.
And can I just mention to you that on May 23rd, we're going to have a bocce event held at Madison High School, and we welcome you all to come and attend and be spectators and see part of what Special Olympics is all about. Thank you.
We'll wait a few minutes while we let the audience clear out.
I've not seen that.
Reports from committees. Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mine is just going to expand on yours a little bit. From the Health Department, they encourage all residents to go for their colon and rectal cancer screening, either with their physician, or they can contact the Madison Health Department at 973-593-3079 for their screening program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The Borough is busy filling potholes. They've used over 15 tons of material over the past four weeks, just around town, filling holes. So please bear with us, we will, you know, we will get there. There is significant ice buildup on the MRC turf fields, we think between six and eight inches of ice. Hopefully, that will resolve itself with some warm weather, maybe some, you know, maybe some rain coming up. The bid opening for the 2014 Road Improvement Program is scheduled for this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. in the courtroom. Bidders are preparing the cost to complete Academy, Belmont, parts of North Pine Tree, Durwood, Fletcher, parts of Niles, Vinton, and Wilson, a total of nine street segments. The project is anticipated for a spring construction start, but is anticipated the Borough will request funds be encumbered for the county cooperative mill and overlay program affecting Division Avenue and Woodland Avenue as well. A review of severely impacted streets will take place over the next two weeks to assess whether additional mill and overlay work is anticipated due to the multiple snow emergencies over this past winter. Instruction plans and specifications for the East Street Parking Lot improvements are being completed by staff, and the bid schedules anticipates a public bid opening on or about May 15th for the project. It has been requested that the Waverly Green Parking Lot also have a site plan produced. However, field survey may be required to resolve utility conflicts and drainage issues, thus requiring some additional time. Now onto my favorite topic, the sewers. The sewer mainline bid documents are being produced in-house with similar anticipated bid opening in May of this year. The Candlewood Pump Station, the level controls at the pump station have been replaced with more modern equipment. Staff has ordered new motor start controls with dry pit submersible motor to replace the vertical shaft motors and pumps. At the Treadwell Pump Station, staff has ordered the generator and an upgraded gas manifold for this location. Several improvements regarding concrete manholes and above-ground controls will also move forward this spring. Last manhole, a metering device at Brook Lake Road is being maintained to record Madison effluent treated by the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting. Actual 2014 flow monitoring data for January and February were offloaded and conveyed to the joint meeting last week. Bailey Ellard Site Remediation Plan, construction work by Tilcon is complete. Several small fence and sign revisions being coordinated by staff for the final remedial action permit documents are submitted to the state. For the Madison Recreation Center remediation plan, which was the old greenhouse-related contamination, final remedial action permit documents were submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and accepted. Hartley Dodge Site Remediation Plan, the LSRP consultant JM Soarjink anticipates reexcavation of soils in the area. Be required by state regulation, but has recently filed a time extension for the project. And last but not least, a final settlement agreement has been proposed to Omega Maintenance Services for work on the boiler installation here at Hartley Dodge. Several small follow-up projects are required to assure trouble-free long-term operation, including larger condensate tank, heating oil alternative system, improved water treatment, improved controls, which is admitted by staff this year. And then finally, if I may, the Madison Athletic Foundation has started its 50/50 cash lottery. Tickets will be limited to 2,000, so no more than 2,000 tickets will be sold. The price of a ticket is $100. One winner will be selected on Saturday, May 3rd, and receive half of what we collect. We did this two years ago, we sold approximately 1,600 tickets, so one winner walked away with $80,000. Anyone interested in buying a ticket, please contact anyone at the MAF, we'd be happy to sell them to you. Thank you very much. And you are limited to buying 2,000 tickets. So that's what's the... You can buy them all if you want, right? But it's not a very good bet.
Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Water Department, they've been working on a repair at Well A. The VFD drive now requires an additional quote, which means that we have to wait for that, and then they will schedule the repair on that. They're doing a lot of markouts for utility and builder reconstruction right now. They always have winter maintenance at each one of the wells. They're replacing lots of meters, and they're also responding to lots of resident calls about frozen pipes and leaks. The water sample analysis is routine, and Stage 2 DBP testing is ongoing. Very short memo from the Electric Department. Their biggest job right now, and what they're concentrating on, is that they're constructing the new three-phase service to the apartment building on 21 Central Avenue that's just been completed. So that's getting real close to completion. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, we want to remind residents that when you change your clocks, you should also change the batteries in your smoke alarms if you didn't do it in the fall, and CO detectors if you didn't do it in the fall. And from the Police Department, they responded to 2,891 calls during the month of February. The calls involve motor vehicle crashes, motor vehicle stops. They made, did 215 summonses, made 20 arrests, and conducted 120 radar posts. Madison officers responded to 57 alarm activations and conducted 752 premise checks, including daytime school checks, business checks, housing checks, and train station checks. Officers investigated 18 abandoned 9/11 calls, checked on the welfare of citizens 15 times, assisted citizens 43 times, investigated noise complaints seven times, and investigated 27 animal and 16 utility complaints. The police also were busy at training courses during the month of February. There was domestic violence training, bloodborne pathogens, hazmat refresher course, regional ESU training at the Madison High School, workplace harassment training. And finally, there was a gun recovery and arrest on Lathrop. Madison detectives assisted the Essex County Prosecutor's Office with a homicide investigation of a missing Madison resident. And the good news, Lieutenant Sorella just marked his 25th anniversary with the Police Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Finance, the Borough Clerk, Mr. Wilkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of tonight's evening is the finance report. We're going to be talking about the budget shortly. But I do have one other item I wanted to bring your attention. You may recall, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about a program with the unfortunate name of Senior Freeze. And I did a little more research, and I didn't have to go far, because there was a very good article in the Madison Eagle two weeks ago about something called the New Jersey Clean Energy Rebate Program. And I was moved by the article, so I called these people, and the people are building sciences, I have no financial interest. But to give you a little background on this, which you may find interesting, if you go ahead and do this remediation program as recommended by a contractor who's licensed to do it, you are eligible for up to a $10,000 interest fee loan that could have a term as long as 10 years, and as well, a $5,000 rebate against the cost of anything you do to make your house more energy efficient. So it's pretty meaningful. It unfortunately does not apply to electric utility, but it does apply to gas. And, you know, if you insulate your house because of heat, it seems to have a good effect on air conditioning as well. So if you have any questions, let me know. I'm in early stages, I'm happy to share with you my experience. Time is a bit of the essence. I believe the program is only in place until the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, do you have anything for Community Affairs?
No report, Mayor.
We do know that Pat has touched down in Newark, so we may see him a little bit later. All right, we are now moving on to the CAP Bank Ordinance, and we will introduce this, and we'll have our CFO explain this, and then we'll have council discussion. So I call up Ordinance 4, 2014, for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Mayor, the ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for March the 24th. We published in the Madison Eagle, post on the bulletin board, and copies will be made available to members of the general public. That's Ordinance 4, 2014, calendar year 2014, Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and to Establish a CAP Bank.
I move...
Thank you.
I move the CAP Bank Ordinance.
I second that. All right, Robert, you want to just give a little background on this, and then we'll
The ordinance...
The Ordinance 4-2014, which is the Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and to Establish a CAP Bank. The local government cap law allows municipalities to increase their budget appropriations, which are inside the cap, by one-half of 1%, unless you authorize by an ordinance to increase it by 3.5% over the previous year's final appropriations that are inside the cap. At the recommendation of our auditors, which are present here, they believe it's in the best interest to increase the one-half of 1% to 3.5%, which we are allowed, over the previous year's final appropriations in the interest of promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. What the CAP Bank does, it gives us the spending flexibility if, in fact, we needed it. And we did need it this year in the amount of, I believe, $80,000, Dave, is that correct? And that was all related to the weather. So I believe this is a proper course of action to take, and I recommend that we proceed.
Council discussion or questions for Robert? Rob?
The only two states are either one-half of 1% or 3.5%. There's no happy medium in there.
I believe that is correct.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Right, we're going to move on into budget introduction. As you'll hear shortly, what we have is the introduction of the budget. The actual hearing is on April 14th. But for those that did come tonight to comment on the budget, there is the number 12 on the agenda is invitation for discussion when you can comment on any resolution listed, and that would, this would fall under the category. So if you're here to comment on the budget, that will be your time. May I have a statement by the Borough Clerk, please?
Okay. Upon introduction and adoption, the 2014 budget and tax resolution will be published by summary in the Madison Eagle on March the 27th, 2014, with a public hearing date set for April the 14th, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Hartley Dodge Memorial, 50 Kings Road, at which time and place all interested individuals will have an opportunity to be heard, and there will be consideration for final adoption. A copy of the budget as introduced will be filed with the Madison Public Library and the Morris County Library for public view, as well as our website.
I move R. 83-2014.
I second the motion. Okay, before we have discussion, I ask Jim to just explain the budget highlight sheet, which has been made available to the public.
Okay. And after I'm done, Mayor, I believe Robert and Dave Evans will be available to speak, and Robert may also talk about the self-examination resolution, since it's all wrapped together. If you don't have a copy of it here, suggest you go to the table and grab a copy of this document. It includes our budget that has been slightly modified since our discussion of a few weeks ago. As this document highlights, the municipal property taxes will actually be dropping by 1.32% on a net basis. You heard, and it was correctly reported, that the municipal property tax is going to be 0%. When you combine that with an increase in the assessed valuation of all properties in town, the net result is that the municipal portion of property taxes for every resident will decrease. This does not include the Board of Ed or county. It just includes municipal property taxes. And I always like Pat Rose's analysis of when you go out to dinner, if you go out to dinner with 10 people and you have a $100 bill and you divide it, and then 11th person comes, the bill's still $100. That's what's happened here. Realogy has, is now in town with a fully valued building, and that had a significant positive impact. The assessed values did go up this year. They had been going down for a number of years in a row. So that's, that will have an automatic positive effect to every resident of the borough of Madison. The second is, highlight is that this budget includes in additional 2.5 million in capital. That's for roads, as Mr. Calonello just mentioned. We have a $1.6 million bid out for a number of nine roads, and that 2.5 million covers that. It's a total of 3.5 million in capital, but an increase this year of 2.5 million, and we believe that's significant. Surplus balances, this chart actually shows a middle graph here that has our surplus balances. We're talking about all the surplus balances, municipal, electric, and water. Those balances have gone up two years in a row, and for a total of 50% increase, or about a $5 million increase in the last two years. We believe that's significant and an excellent indicator of the financial strength of the borough and of this budget. And then finally, municipal services will be maintained at their current levels, and we believe that's important. Madison continues to have a very, residents that expect a high level of service, and we deliver, we believe we deliver a high level of service. There's a nice chart here at the bottom of this that talks about the various services that are included in your taxes that would not be included in your taxes if you lived in surrounding communities. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Robert, if you could, anything, or David?
Yes, I would. Another action item this evening is to adopt Resolution, I believe, 84-2014, which is self-examination of the budget resolution. Two out of every three years, the Department of Community Affairs allows municipalities that meet 10 criteria to self-exam their budget. It allows it to be adopted much more easily. I'm not going to read all 10 of these items, but one of the, one of the significant factors that we easily meet these criteria is of our strong financial performance, the internal controls that we have in place, and the successful completion and submission of our audits and financial statements to meet the deadlines.
Thank you. And Dave, as auditor, can you share your viewpoint on the budget?
We have the privilege of serving approximately 60 municipalities in what's deemed to be the Northwest Corridor of New Jersey. This is Morris, Sussex, Warren, Essex Counties, and we serve a fairly good cross-section of the municipalities in this area. And I have to say that you are to be commended for the continuous actions that you have taken to put you in the position that you are in this evening, in that of the towns we serve, you are, if not the most fiscally responsible, you're in the top two or three with the resources that you have, the services that you provide to your residents, outstanding financial position, outstanding collection percentage, constant forecasting, and thinking of not only what's going to happen in 2014, but what's going to happen in 2015 and 2016. So I think that you all should be commended for your guidance, and you should commend your administration for all our efforts for the work that they've done to place you in the position that you're in.
Thank you. Council discussion will start with Chair of Finance, Ben, and then we'll go around from Council President on around. I understand that Robbie received a message from Pat as far as his statement.
Do you want me to do that now?
No, when we, we'll do, we'll go around, and then when Pat's turn comes, we'll come back to you, and you can go ahead and read Pat's statement. Ben?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have a written statement because there are a few points I wanted to be sure I made, and I wouldn't mind being on record for them, so I thought to write out my comments. I would like to touch on a couple of key aspects of this 2014 budget. The first thing I'd like to bring up is the amount allocated for capital increases from $1 million to $3.5 million, with approximately half allocated to road reconstruction work. You can't go very far in Madison without going over a badly worn road. We deserve better than that, as many of you have told me, and I agree. It is time to begin making up for the underinvestment in capital that has been ongoing for some time. We are also allocating an additional $600,000 for our electric and water utility capital accounts. Although not as obvious as our roads, their infrastructure is also aging and continues to require upgrades and replacement. Last year, the increase in municipal property taxes was 1.48%, the smallest increase in 10 years. Unfortunately, the state mandated reappraisal of borough properties mitigated any positive tax effect we were intending to introduce. This year, our assessed values will remain unchanged, with an increase in ratables actually resulting in a slight downward adjustment to our taxes, as Mr. Burnett just explained. The administration recommended an increase this year of 1.25% in the municipal property tax. Although I liked the direction, I felt we could do more, and recommended a zero increase. Most of my colleagues on the council agreed, and that's reflected in the 2014 budget. One of the unfortunate consequences of the state mandated 2% property tax cap is that it forces municipalities to steadily increase their tax rate. Otherwise, when time comes when they need to raise a targeted amount of funds through municipal taxes, they will be constrained by the cap. Moreover, that cap will be applied to a smaller base if indeed taxes have not been increasing over time. Therefore, this year's action, 0% increase, should be viewed as an isolated event to compensate for the financial repercussions of last year's reassessment and not the beginning of a trend. Even with no increase in taxes and a significant allocation to pay for necessary repairs to our infrastructure, we require no reductions in municipal staff or services. In fact, this budget provides for three hires for our Police Department and two hires for our Department of Public Works. We are also finally addressing in a tangible way a problem that this council and others in the past have mentioned but never did anything about. Many of our senior citizens who are on fixed income find it increasingly difficult financially to continue living here. I have recommended that a fund be established with $100,000 of electric surplus to pay for rebates against the electric bills for those who need the assistance. I will come back to the council with a detailed proposal on how such a program would work, and I hope to see it in place by mid-year. I am optimistic that this budget will perform as expected and produce another year of very positive financial results for the borough. Importantly, we will also make a positive and meaningful beginning to turning around a protracted period of underinvestment in capital. Now, in spite of the strength of this budget and the fact that this would be, hopefully, the third budget in a row to produce excellent results, it's met with some controversy. And I always find, when that happens, I tend to ask myself some questions. I know that sounds a little odd, but I'll share that experience with you. And I've asked questions that others have, in a sense, raised by their proposals. Starting out with, should we decrease our electric rates? My answer to that is, yes, we should. We have high electric rates relative to other municipalities, and we should address that. The question is, when should we do it? I've had the opportunity to review the work of the strategic, excuse me, planning committees that are focused on our budget and our electric utility. And after we've had a chance to experience how the electric purchase arrangements will function and be able to look at the recommendations of those committees, I would then recommend that we seriously consider a reduction. Now, depending on the outcome of those two activities I just mentioned, I believe we could do that as early as next year. Now, the question is, but aren't we overspending surplus, as some have alleged in the meanwhile? Let me explain why the answer to that question is not at all. And to do that, I need a little historical reference. By 2011, Madison had gone through several years of running down its surplus by taking more out of its surplus accounts than it could restore in the following year. The amount of surplus used to operate the borough relative to total surplus available became unsustainably high. As an example, the 2010 budget applied over 80% of the 2009 year-end surplus to operating expenses, leaving what in fact was an inconsequential amount in the combined surplus accounts. The first step in turning around an unsustainable situation came with the 2012 budget. In that year, we allocated 62%, please keep that in mind, 62%, down from 80, of the year-end surplus to operating expenses, and we ended the year with a significant $2.2 million increase in surplus. Last year proved even better. We applied 53% of our year-end 2012 surplus to operating expenses. Our budget for 2014 is in the same league, with most of the recent budgets where the percentage of year-end 2013 surplus we are using in this budget is 62%, identical to what we used in 2012. Moreover, the residual unencumbered surplus this year remains practically unchanged from the high level attained in 2013. To be precise, at the end of last year, we had $5,700,000 left after we allocated surplus. With this budget, we will have approximately $5,650,000. So I don't see us really running down our surplus dramatically, but I will say that the pattern's different when we consider only the electric utility surplus. The 2010 budget applied approximately 69% of the 2009 year-end electric surplus, increasing to 75% in 2011. And the next couple of years were similar, actually peaking in 2013 at 78% of the previous year's electric surplus. We were using hefty amounts of that surplus. But recognize that in none of those years were electric surplus dollars used for capital improvement, only for operating expenses. Following this pattern, the proportion of 2013 electric surplus going to the 2014 operating budget, operating budget, not capital, is at an historical low of 66%. What is different this year is the allocation of additional electric surplus, approximately $1.6 million, to capital. That dramatically increases the amount of 2013 electric surplus going toward the 2014 budget. But we felt it was prudent, given the dramatic increase in total surplus and the actual percentage of total 2013 surplus going into the 2014 budget. So what's the downside of doing that? Well, if we don't have as sterling a year in terms of aggregating and adding to our surplus this year, we probably will not be able to allocate as much to our capital improvement account from our electric surplus account. Is that a financial apocalypse? I don't think so. Certainly doesn't imply any downgrades to our ratings, and I don't believe it necessitates any emergency measures. Moreover, given the borough's financial performance, I feel that it's highly unlikely that our 2014 surplus will fall. I'd just like to end my remarks by thanking Ray Cody, Jim Burnett, and Robert Califford for their hard work and dedication to the well-being of the borough. We may not always agree, but I never doubted that they are working tirelessly in the interests of doing what is best for Madison. We all owe them our thanks for a job well done. I would also like to thank my fellow council members and residents who reached out and shared their thoughts, ideas, and concerns. Many of your suggestions are reflected in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, any comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Just bear with me. Ben, I, you said a lot of the things I was going to say, and I'm going to take a little different cut at it. Long before the budget process started this year, actually toward the end of, middle to end of last year, we heard loud and clear from our residents that they wanted work done. Academy Road had the expectation that their road would be paved, and deservedly so. A lot of other roads needed to be done, were long overdue. When you look at the infrastructure work that needed to be done, you know, Rob, just rightfully so, said, you know, work needs to be done or else we'll have problems. Our departments needed staff. You know, DPW had the expectation of hiring a number of people. Well, that has to be paid for. And on all those initiatives, the council unanimously voted, yeah, those are all legitimate requirements, and we supported it unanimously. Now along comes the capital budget. We identified $1.6 million of work that needs to be done this year, but also in the future years. Well, you can't pay for that work when the state limits you to a 2% property tax cap. Can't do it. So you can't have your cake and eat it too. The best way to do it, and thank God this town has this availability or this flexibility to do it, is in the electric surplus. Now, at the last meeting, and Mr. Stocker isn't here right now, but he rightfully said, the residents put money into that electric surplus, and it should be spent to improve the town, and deservedly so. We pay for it, we should get the benefit of it. Now... Now, the reason I support it is, it's a couple of reasons. One, and Councilman Wolkowitz didn't mention this tonight, but he's mentioned it throughout, what we're doing this year is a one-year event, meaning we have the flexibility to do all this capital work this year. Will we have it next year? We don't know, because when you talk about electric rate cuts, when you talk about projecting work out, well, quite frankly, I'm not going to spend money I don't have yet. A lot of stock has been put into the savings that we are going to realize when we change our purchasing methodology for electric. Well, I'd rather wait and see that money and see those results come in before I start cutting the rates. Should we do it? Absolutely. Would I'd like to see it done maybe next year or the year after? Absolutely. I hate the hot weather, I love to run my electric, my air conditioning. Would I like to have a lower electric bill? Absolutely. But the key there is residents have the flexibility with their electric usage. They don't have that same flexibility with property taxes. And here's the second part of my discussion. A good friend of mine has three young children. She lives in a house that pays $23,000 a year in property taxes. Now, that's a boatload of money no matter how, which way you cut it. She was hit this year with the revaluation, which was mandated to us by the County of Morris. I think what we've done is given her a break by either keeping her taxes flat allows her to recoup some of the money that she's paying and also maybe get a little money back. And like she said to me, Bob, if I had the choice, I'll take the property tax cut or flat tax and no electric rate cut, plus guess what? I can open my windows and reduce my electric bill. I'd rather see the roads fixed and have the town's infrastructure improved rather than giving away the store right now. So I have a lot of faith in this budget, I support it 100%. It's a very prudent, it's a very thought-out approach, which I think keeps Madison on the course it is right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Rob?
Would you like me to read Pat's first or my comment?
Why don't you, we'll, as I said, go around in order, so keep yours separate, we'll take yours now, and then we'll come back when Pat's turn would come up.
Sure. So, as many of you know, Pat and I wrote a letter to the Madison Eagle. As opposed to reading it in its entirety, may I simply enter the text into the record or do I need to read it?
You can, you can enter it in by letter.
All right, so, so, please, okay. So basically, I think that there's a lot of common ground as it pertains to my goals for the budget and what was presented. We clearly, everyone clearly recognizes the need for capital expenditures, no doubt. As you recall, last year I pushed for a 0% tax increase, but I pushed for it funded through the recognition of health department contracts and spending cuts, not the drawing down of more surplus. From 2008 to 2010 roughly, electric rates went up by $8 million in this borough, and 100% of that was passed on to the resident. When I was at University of Pennsylvania getting my master's, I had a great class. It was just a bonds class, was taught by Professor Mike Gibbons. And he always said, they're gonna, you know, let them talk about yields, let them talk about percentages, let them talk about anything they want. At the end of the day, you make or lose money based on the price you pay for an asset versus the price you sell it for. The big problems that I have with this budget, number one, is that we are drawing down a massive amount of electric surplus, dollar-wise, not percentage-wise, but dollar-wise, to fund operating. We are increasing the amount of municipal surplus we are drawing down for this budget by over 20% or by close to $600,000. The reason, in my opinion, after studying this for some time, that we had to go through these lean times, was that we became so dependent on surplus spending, using surplus to fund our operating, that when the council locked into the five-year fixed-rate electric purchase plan, a lot of that went away. And we simply couldn't afford the way we were living. So we went through some very lean times, and no one wants to go through that again. The ideas that Pat and I have put forward still afford significant capital expenditures. They support many of the same initiatives that are proposed in this well-thought-out budget. But it also includes an electric rate cut, because it is simply not fair to ask the residents of this borough to shoulder 100% of the increase in cost and then, when rates fall. And clearly, we're spending some money that we might not necessarily have, right? I know that we have enough in the current electric surplus to cover the expenditures this year. However, if it's a mild winter or something, we may not be able to build our surplus back up to the levels that we're thinking about for the preliminary 2015 budget. So, in a way, you know, there's some spending of money that isn't here already going on. But we need to really control spending. And we owe it to our residents to allow them to share in the benefit of a lower, of the hard work that Jim has done, you know, with our new hedging strategy and the new purchases that we've done. We cannot get ourselves in the same situation that we found ourselves in 2008 and 2009, where through no fault of our own, when electric prices go up, that we have to cut back so severely. I mean, what we do now in terms of hedging is great, but we do not control the price of electricity. We can do our hedges, it will soften the blow, and it'll give us a little bit of lead time, but we, but, you know, the price of electricity is something over which we have absolutely no control. We can't be spending at all, we should limit ourselves while times are good, so that when times, if and when times get bad again, the cuts aren't so severe. And we need to share and give back to our residents a small portion of what they've paid in over the past, you know, five or six years. So while I would like to thank the borough administration and the finance department, you know, for the hard work on this budget, I would respectfully ask that we table the introduction of this budget until we can look harder at realizing a rate cut for our residents in this year's budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Carmella?
Thank you, Mayor. How do I feel about this budget? I'm thrilled to death when I went home and I told my husband that we're not going to have, there was a possibility that we can have a zero tax increase this year. He, you know, he did a big hallelujah, okay? Would I like to see electric rates reduced? Absolutely. But one of the things that I learned over the last couple of years, being involved with Sustainable Madison Environmental Commission, is that a lot of that responsibility for the use of the electric rests on each one of us as individuals. And I looked at this very carefully, and I listened, you know, to the original budget that was like 1.25, which I absolutely totally agreed with. It took a little convincing, and Ben can tell you, it took a little convincing that we should go down to a 0%. And I'm willing to admit that because I've seen in the past that sometimes when you need that little extra money later on. But, you know, I listened very carefully. And then I start listening, and I have always listened, to the people that come to this meeting, really with huge concerns, you know, about roads. Roads is only a part of that. We have infrastructure problems, we need to do sewer upgrades, we need to do new generators in the wells that are extremely important. We haven't done milling and overlay in a couple of years. And there's a good preliminary capital improvement fund for it. And, you know, we hear a lot about surplus, what it does, what it doesn't do, if we should, and whatever, if we should take it, if we should not take it. And, you know, going back into the history books a little, you know, I started to do a little reading about the original, the formation of these utilities. When you think about it, in 1890, the foresight of these wonderful people who decided that we should have a water and electric department, utility, we should have electricity in Madison, and it just progressed from there. A lot of people forget about our poor stepchild, the water utility, which, you know, does supply us with money as a whole. And so, you know, during that whole process, that I start learning a little bit more about the electric utility and how Jersey Central, and, which is now Jersey, well, I guess it was Central Electric or whatever, became Jersey Central, came to Madison and says, we want to buy the utility, and they said, absolutely not. We have plans for what we want to do, so, with these utilities. And so I look back at some of them. In 1984, there was a great two-part articles in the Madison Eagle, and they talked about from 1890 all through each one of the years, different concepts from different councils about what we should do with the surplus, what we should do with the utility and whatever. And some really great decisions came from there. I want to read at least one excerpt from this, from this one accounting. "Municipal ownership was one of the basic premises on which the utility was started in 1890, when every resident would pay a pro-rata portion of the cost of lighting public streets through municipal bonds. The other premise that the utility would make money suggested in 1897," weren't they smart, "would make it possible for the utility to pay its own way and wipe out the debt that was incurred in building it, generating a surplus to transfer to the municipal budget, which first occurred in 1927, made Madison," and this is a quote, "almost independent of banks for borrowing because the borough borrows free of charge from the wealthy utility plant." I think that says a lot about what the people who designed this, who thought of having the utility, who held on to the utility, and gave us a future with this. So, do I, I'm in awe of the fact that we were able to put aside $2.5 million from this utility and go ahead with very, very aggressive road reconstruction and really taking care of this Madison. And I hear this from residents all the time. I was extremely pleased when we came up with the zero increase, but even more pleased that $100,000 is going to be put aside for our senior citizens. These are the people that made this town what it is today, okay? They deserve our consideration, they need the help now. The reevaluation last year really created a problem for a lot of people, not only senior citizens, but it was quite enlightening to people see their assessments go up in Madison and their taxes go up. Now it's time, I believe, for this council to say, we really heard you, and we really want to help you, and this is how we're going to help you. We're going to fix your roads, we're going to fix the sewers, we're going to do as much as we possibly can. We're going to have all the wonderful services that we've always had, and we're not going to increase your taxes. So, you know, thank you to Jim and Ray, I know you guys worked hard on the 1.25, and to Robert, but I think that this is, this is a good thing, and I'm hoping that we come to a good consensus and move on with this budget.
Thank you. Ostry?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Last year, we did a terrific job keeping the tax rate low at 1.48%. However, residents did feel the effects of the revaluation. So this year, we have the ability to do a 0% tax rate, all the while maintaining the services and playing catch-up with the capital projects. We are maintaining a healthy surplus in the bank and using an appropriate amount of current surplus to offset the municipal tax. I support the tax cut and, for now, keeping the electric rates where they are. Our rates should remain competitive with other electric providers in order to provide revenue for our operating costs and to keep our taxes reasonable. I mean, you've heard from Carmella, there's a history there, and you've heard from Mr. Wolkowitz. Our asset with our electric utility is our service and dependability, something other towns do not have, as seen in the recent hurricanes and snowstorms. Again, other towns in the area cannot, they do not have a revenue stream to offset their property taxes like the electric utility. I also might add that we have lower taxes compared to our neighboring towns, the chart that was, Jim gave out to everyone. With electric rates, residents have a choice to conserve and lower their bills, as Mr. Landrigan said, but they have to pay their taxes. Along with a 0% tax rate, I am supporting the proposal of helping those in need by setting aside $100,000 for electric rate relief. I'm also supporting the $3.5 million for capital projects. We are behind in our repairs and reconstruction of the roads and the infrastructure. This council already committed, it was totally unanimous, a $1.6 million of the $3.5 million for the road reconstruction projects. This will allow our engineering department to draw up the plans now and bid the project out in one bid package. Hopefully, this will give us a better price. This process will also allow us to start the projects a lot sooner. The other projects reflect needed infrastructure repairs and improvements which need to be done now. Yes, this year's capital budget number is a large one, but we believe it is necessary to maintain an appropriate service level to the residents. We don't know what next year will bring. We will have new electric contracts, we will have new sources of revenue from expanded contracts with other towns, and we do know that there will be recommendations from the strategic planning committees to help the council set guidelines on capital spending going forward. So all these will factor into what the capital budget will be for the following year. And I have outlined why I support the budget as introduced, but I have also examined the points made in a letter to the Madison Eagle dated March 6 by my fellow council members, Mr. Catalinello and Mr. Rowe. First off, I don't think placing a letter in the paper is an appropriate way of doing council business, and second of all, it does bother me, their lack of transparency. First, the bottom line is what they don't say, and that is their budget calls for a 1.3% tax hike. Their budget calls for removing $500,000 from the proposed capital budget of $3.5 million. Those road projects, the infrastructure projects, and the replacement of the HVA system at the library need to be done now. These projects are vital to giving our residents the service they want and expect. Moreover, this capital budget puts us back on track to keeping Madison in good shape. Second, the following statement in their letter is just not true, and I quote, "We are using surplus yet unrealized." That's not true. The three surplus accounts have approximately $5.65 million remaining in the banks after we apply $1.6 million from the electric utility for capital and approximately $4.2 million from the electric utility for operating. The remaining surplus is in line with what we had last year when we successfully turned the corner in running down our surplus. Plus, we are using the lowest amount of electric surplus for operating expenses in approximately six years. Third, they state in their letter that the proposed capital plan is extracting every last dollar of surplus from our electric utility. That isn't true. Our proposed capital plan- Our proposed capital plan draws from the general fund balance, the sale of property on Bello Avenue, FEMA money, and some part of the electric utility surplus. Fourth, what they aren't telling the residents is that their electric rate decreases nowhere near the 10% that they had proposed last fall. If that could be done, it would mean a $2.2 million reduction in electric utility surplus for the following year. So, I've already stated that our electric utility is a huge asset to the residents because it helps to keep our property taxes relatively low. So, I support the 0% tax rate. I support the $3.5 million capital budget. I support the substantial amount of surplus we still have in the bank. All our services are being maintained. We keep a rating of, from standards and poor, of AAA. Municipal property taxes on the average home will drop by $35.39. And, as you heard from our auditor, we are one of the top fiscally sound municipalities in the state. So, now to paraphrase my friend Sammy Cerzillo over there, 0% tax rate is a beautiful thing. Being able to give an electric rate relief to people in need is a beautiful thing. To finally get to do long overdue capital projects is a beautiful thing. So, I want to thank the administration and Ben Wokowitz for crafting such a budget. What other town in the area can boast a 0% tax rate while maintaining all services? Thank you.
And Rob, for Pat.
Sure. Just one quick note. According to data that I received from Assistant Borough Administrator Burnett, last year we spent $3.72 million in electric utility surplus. And operating this year, we're close to 5.7. So, you may want to check your math. Mr. Rowe's statement. I cannot support the budget that is being introduced tonight. For the past year, I have been advocating several things that need to be included in our 2014 budget. A significant electric rate cut for residents. Number two, significant yet sustainable capital program. Three, a sustainable operating budget, i.e., one that continues to provide quality services to our residents, but is not reliant on ever increasing transfers from the electric utility. I do not believe this budget meets any of those critical goals. Mr. Catalinello and I provided counsel an outline of a budget that showed significant increases in capital spending, up 200%, a reasonable increase in the operating budget, up 3%, modest growth in the use of electric surplus to fund operating, 2%, and a reasonable increase, 6%, in the use of general surplus to support the operating budget. We also utilized a one-time gain from reology to cover a one-time funding of a tax appeal fund. Overall appropriations would increase by 12%, hardly a draconian budget. All of the budget items, these, all of budget items, these met our goals. Must have a typo there. It would allow a fair cut in the electric rates for our residents. It would save them six times the final reduction in the property tax rate that council approved at our last meeting. Given that our residents currently pay one of the highest rates in the state of New Jersey for electricity, our proposed rate reduction is not only fair, it is warranted, and I hope it will be one of council's top priorities for 2014. The borough is about to save $5 million a year on the cost of purchasing electricity. To pass not a single penny of this savings along to residents this year, as our cost of purchasing power plummets, is unconscionable. I would ask council to table the budget introduction this evening and ask the administrative team and the finance committee to bring back to council something that would provide real financial relief to our residents. Absent that, I will vote no on the budget introduction, and when, it is up for a final vote in April. Patrick Rowe, Member, Madison Borough Council.
Thank you for reading under it. Ben?
Yeah, I did check my math, and I stand by what I said. The operating, the electric surplus going to operating last year was $3.7 million. This year, it'll be $4.2, an increase of $496,000.
But it's, but it's greater. I believe the statement was made that this year, we're, we're using less than we did last year.
No, percentage-wise.
First percent.
Percentage-wise.
But the actual dollar amount is greater.
We increased our electric surplus by more than the amount that we're suggesting to increase the operating contribution.
But we're still-
So, it's percentage-wise, the lowest in six years.
But we're still transferring more money. We all, we agree. I agree, it's a lower percentage. You agree, it's a larger number.
Right. We are transferring more dollars.
We're transferring more dollars.
But percentage-
That's absolutely true. We have more money.
Right. Great. So, let's give some back to the residents.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make a few quick comments. I think everyone on both sides of this issue did a great job of sharing your thoughts and the challenge, a challenge in a very positive way that we have, recognizing there are only eight other communities in the state that can have this conversation about how do you take advantage of owning your own utility. It was, and actually, this year, on December 7, we're going to be celebrating 125th anniversary of the birth of Madison. We broke away from Chatham Township. They're our good friends now. We resolved that issue. But we broke away primarily because we wanted control of our water utility. Within two years of that breakaway was when, as Carmelo pointed out, the council at the time decided, "It's time to make our own electricity. Control the two essential utilities." Water, obviously, was long and essential utility for the residents, and electric was quickly becoming one. So, that was a big step in Madison, allowed us to be where we are today, talking about it. And I won't go through all the little history things, but 1923, they almost, they talked about selling the plant, and all of a sudden, there was an upset victory in the election that year. That's how people, residents and the officials, were so passionate about the electric utility. Good friend of mine, and many will recognize the name Sam Gordon, in the 1950s, as he was on the council, fought, at that time, they were talking about selling off the utility. And for the record, it was before he was selling appliances, he was still just selling food in his supermarket. But, you know, he convinced the council, "Do not sell this utility, it is too valuable." I've had economists recognize in the state, tell me, "Sell off the utility," and I'm glad we didn't. This is a great thing we have. In 1983, we were taken to court by the late, great Harold Higgs, our ombudsman in town. He thought it was illegal for us to transfer anything from the electric utility to support the borough. It was interesting, and one of the things I love about Harold Higgs is, you know, he doesn't accept being loser too long, because he'll join the other side. When it was held up by the court that Madison can use the proceeds from the electric utilities to support borough operations, Harold Higgs then came back and said, "We're not charging enough. Let's transfer more." So, it's interesting how, how the process goes through. It is true, we are at the higher end, and no one at this table on either side of this issue will argue, we are a lower rate utility right now. We are at the higher end. We also have some most reliable electricity. I think if you went to the streets of Summit and asked them, "Would you want to pay JCPenel P&amp;L rates, or would you want to be part of Madison Utilities, charging this amount for power?" They would, as someone said at their council meeting after Hurricane or Superstorm Sandy, "Why can't we be more like Madison?" I think they would be more than happy to be in our town. And just the, talk about rates and how we go forward. I am going to be very supportive of a rate decrease because we need to be market. It is tough to define the market when you compare with JCPenel, as opposed to PSENG or to some of the other communities. People will pay a little bit more for reliability. What does Madison get when they pay for electricity? Dividends in the end. And what did we do when this contract came into place five years ago? As we anticipated the increase, we actually did rate cushioning. So, rather than increase the rates immediately upon the new contract, we eased it in over a couple of years. That meant the surplus of utility was brought down. In fact, we ran it a deficit for that year. But we decided not to do what one of the other communities did in the nine-community organization, which was a 95% increase the year their new contract went into place. So, we took the hit on the cushioning. And I am very supportive of making sure we do a conservative ease-out, too. Coming out through the summer, when we have the highest use and it'll be a new thing, buying on the spot, spot market, what are the impacts? So, we, in the fall, we can look at how the summer went. My mouth is not working at all this, tonight. But how this, how the summer went and set the rates, and I really asked this council to come back, not in January of 2015, but start working on this after we come out of the summer, on a new rate structure, so we can be competitive with the market out there. I've said it, and everyone in this room has heard it, if anyone has heard me talk about the rate structure, it's all right to charge a little bit more for reliability, but if we're above the market by more, it's just another name for a tax. I'm not supportive of that. We've got to get to a rate structure that is fair for our residents. So, I commend everyone and thank our administrative staff for their hard work on this. And just one little other reminder, as David Evans of Nevisacia mentioned before, of the towns he works with, of the position we're in, it is so rare for communities. And I think we are number one in Madison for reliance of funding our borough operations through property taxes at the lowest possible rate. And that is something we're proud of, that we have these other sources to offset. Electric utility spins off a dividend. If you own stock in First Energy, you get a dividend checked. If you get power from JCPenel, it's not so reliable, but you get your dividend checked for First Energy. If you live in Madison, you get your dividend checked by paved roads and support to operations.
And with that, can we have a vote on the introduction?
Mr. Catalinello?
I vote no.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wokowitz?
Yes.
Again, the hearing, public hearing on that is April 14, right here. That's four weeks from, now there's an extra Monday in March, that's five weeks from tonight. Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council received an email March 7 from Resident Dave Arthur, Ferndale Road, regarding the municipal budget.
Thank you. And now, we're on to the invitation for discussion, one of two. And this is the one that has limitations as far as what you can discuss. You can discuss any resolution that has been listed tonight, including the budget one, which just passed on introduction, but remember, there'll be a hearing in five weeks. Or any of the other resolutions that are listed under the consent agenda. Or you can comment on the appropriation, the agenda discussion, which is appropriation of $16,000 from General Capital Improvement Fund for emergency boiler replacement. When you step forward, please state your name, your address, the resolution you're commenting on, or the agenda topic, and keep your minute, your comments to three minutes or less. I lose an hour of sleep and I can't talk, so. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Sam?
Sam Cerzillo, Park Avenue, Madison. You know, as a businessman, I mean, I've been listening to this budget, all that, and all this money and all that. The best way to, to do a budget in my business, if things are a little rough or something, is to cut some of the overhead. On several occasions over the last few meetings, I suggested that the Board of Ed come to the East Wing. Did you ever go to that shared meeting with the Board of Ed? What's your feeling on the Board of Ed coming in this Borough Hall, fixing up that East Wing? And they can start sharing some services, cut some overhead, instead of having superintendent for this, superintendent assistant, cut some overhead. That's the key. So, we don't have to spend so much money every year on the overhead. I mean, there's dozens of ways I could tell you how we could save money if the Board of Ed and the borough get together. For example, you don't need a superintendent of Public Works for the Board of Ed, and you don't need a superintendent for, just need one. Madison's only four square miles, so my point is, you've got to cut some of the overhead down. You've got a Public Works down there. Instead of the Board of Ed going to maybe private places to get their equipment fixed, we've got the garage down. I mean, there's ways, you've got to cut some of this overhead. That's the key. Overhead is the key. And share some of the services. And we'll fix up this segment because it's got to be fixed sooner or later. So, what is your feeling on that? Did you talk to the-
This is the time we don't share opinions, we take the advice, but we will, shared services will make that offer back to the Board of Education, and I think they understand that unless we find another occupant in there, the offer that we made a couple of years ago is still, still standing.
Well, you know, you keep talking about the, we, the taxpayers, we pay taxes, so much percent goes, so in other words, we, talking to a lot of people, they think it's a great idea, and it's got to be fixed sooner or later. And there's, and then, you know, you've got that, that building on Woodland Road, you know, don't sell the property, be a bigger park lot, but that's, 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 to talk to a lot of people, it's a great idea. That's one thing. And I like the idea, in other words, all these projects for these roads and all that, you're going to put them all together. Now, my only question is, is there going to be a lot of curbs done on these roads? And another suggestion, and it's a winner, you've got to put Belgium block, don't put concrete curbs. So, we're going with Belgium block?
Yep. That's, that's our standard.
Very good.
I won't use my lining.
Oh, I want to talk on Resolution 87, about the farmer's market. You know, I strongly suggest you don't put that farmer's market. Is it going back on Green Village Road again?
Yes.
Do any of yous, like, go see how it sort of jams up the town? In other words, I, you know, I go to barber shop, everybody, you know, lunchtime, they're supposed to start at 1:00. 11:30, they start setting up. People that got to go to lunch or something going through Madison, I seen cars backed up to Drew, catch the light three or four times. They start setting up 11:30. Supposed to go till 5:00. You go by around 6:00, 6:30, they're still there. You know, you're jamming the whole town. I talked to a lot of cops, they wish you'd move it out of there. Why does it have to go on Green Village Road? It doesn't make any sense. You jam the whole town up because cars can't make that right-hand turn on Green Village Road and coming the other way. I mean, do you go look at these things that we tell you, or you just-
No, they get review, and your time's up, so Sam will have another opportunity to come back up a little bit. But, so, you know, that has been shared with the DDC. They have looked at, you know, feedback from others, and part of it is to keep it downtown, it's worked well in that location, that was the decision to keep it there.
Can I just say one more thing?
One more thing? Just make it fast.
A couple minutes, a couple meetings ago, I've been coming to many, many meetings, I've been to many meetings with different mayors and all that. And the, two meetings ago, I wanted to come up on the second time, and you said, "No." Is that in the bylaws? Because other mayors had let me come up twice. Sometimes you forget to say something. We sit here two and a half, three hours, and I might have forgot something on my mind, and I want to come back this second. Is that your idea, or is it in the bylaws?
That's a standard procedure.
We always have two public comment sessions.
We have the two sessions, but you can only comment at one-
I'm not saying that, I'm saying, yeah, I'm on the one with anything on the agenda. I'm talking about the second time, when I got up and say something, and then everybody got talked, and I wanted to come up to-
Sir, sir, I mean, you're beyond your three minutes now, but we give each person one opportunity to speak, and so you have three minutes to speak at either one of the two sessions. We don't let people come back up again and again. Remember, the Open Public Meeting Act, the purpose of it is for the public to come and watch the council do their business in public. There's a public portion where the public can comment, but it's not a dialogue between the public and, and the council, because the council does have to do business, and most of these folks have to go home at some point to get up to go to work the next day. So, we, we have the right to limit it, and we limit it to two public comments. Many councils have one public comment for three minutes, one comment only. Here, people are afforded two opportunities to speak.
But only one time, one time, yeah, I understand.
And-
I said, other mayors let you come up and say something, you know.
Yes, as, as I've often said, one of, I quote from Mark Twain, "Please, please accept my apology for this long letter, and I didn't have time to write a short one." So, it's the idea of, you know, being concise and being respectful for everyone's time. And the other thing is to avoid ongoing debate, because otherwise, people would rotate back and, because it's a, share thoughts, not a debate time.
Well, we listened for almost a round and a half, we knew it was going to be a 4-2 vote, so.
4-1.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on items listed for resolutions or the agenda? Yes, Tom?
Thomas Binting, Rolling Hill Court. I just want to offer my gratitude to both the administration and this Borough Council for the hard work on this budget. I think it's very reflective, I think, in the dedication that you did and spent time- I think it's very reflective, I think, in the dedication that you did and spent time on this. I think it's reflective. I have two overall comments. Number one, I think philosophically, I support this budget as proposed, because I, on this basis, it's largely being funded by a surplus that's been built up in the past. It's being spent on an infrastructure that's deteriorated in the past, and I look at those as an offset. And that seems to me the principle on which this budget has been presented. The last comment that I'd like to make is, dealing with the electric and the water utility, I view those as businesses that the citizens of this town have invested in. And I expect a fair return on that investment. What is that return? I expect to see that in the municipal budget. I don't know what it is, but I think that work has to be done. Over the years, if you were comparing us to a for-profit utility, I think you go to the Bureau of Public Utilities, the rate of return that they expect for the capital investment is pretty high. I don't think we come anywhere close to that, if I value the utility. And I think that probably should be done, because I think that is what we should be looking for in the budget. The return on that investment, not running it like an accordion up and down. It should be a consistent, and I agree with Rob, it's not something that you play around with. It should be run like a business, and they should look to what the capital they needs, looking at their long-term capital improvements.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yep, Sam?
We also need to buy new pens.
We have to introduce new budget.
Can't afford them.
Didn't have budget. Came with my own pen.
Oh, very.
I come here really not for myself tonight. I come here for people that won't come to a meeting, that won't send a letter, and that are affected by this budget. There's a lot of friends of ours, and I don't think anyone's untouched by this, that always opens up their electric bill, sees it, sees how it, you know, rises, and says, you know what, we've got to do something about this. Well, at that time, there was nothing they can do, but either pay the bill or shut their air conditioning off. And for some people, that is a critical issue, to have to turn that down or turn that off. I see numerous windows in apartment buildings, two-family homes, that are open, that once were closed during the summer, because we had lower electric rates, and they were more apt to use the electricity, bring back an economy to the town through that method, but they also paid their benefit by using electricity, and then all of a sudden, it came back. That's fine, but what I see is people not using it because of the cost. I also see some people that will say, you know what, I can't take it in town anymore, the taxes are too high, I'm moving, that's it. So we lose a lot of critical people that are in our town for generations sometimes, because they're nickled and dimed and pushed out of town by just a little too much. And I think that's what's happening. Now, I didn't sit in on a budget meeting, but anybody could tell you that there's a lot of people that will have it difficult because of this budget, how I understand that there are certain things that will rise, and that will box people out of using Madison as their home and using Madison utilities. They're going to cut back on the use of it. I see, over the last four to five years, where, again, windows that were closed, and people enjoyed their air conditioning, they're opening up the windows and sweating out the summer. I hope it's a cool summer for that purpose, but ideally, they need that. There has to be a way that that money could come back to the people of Madison in our taxes, lowering our taxes, and keeping our electricity more affordable. I'm for great roads, I'm for a lot of these things, and you say, well, where are we going to get the money from? Well, we did in the past, maybe we spent a little bit less for certain things, and stretched it out a little bit more, but we did it. We have an opportunity here with this windfall that will come our way this year and the next several years, to do it right. But obviously, we're heading down the wrong path. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Jerry? Or Dave?
Okay, I don't really have anything truly negative to say. I've heard some comments, Jerry Stevenson, three hours to drive.
Thank you, Jerry.
The fact remains that throughout all of these discussions, when we've come into these budget meetings, nobody's really talked about what the percentage is that this budget is going up. The facts are there. I mean, you put it right on here, this budget is going up as far as, we're going to spend 15% more this year, we're going up to almost 29 and a half million from 25 and change. Now, our revenues are also going up, the appropriations are going up by about the same percentage. So what we elected to do is to say, okay, here's what we project we're going to have as far as extra income, what can we step ahead and spend it on? Now, Rob has pointed out, I don't honestly know whether or not on this whole 3.5 million for road construction, whether we'll actually get that all done this year or not. I know the proposal was made, maybe instead of spending 3.5, we spend 3 million, it's something for council to consider. But I also wanted to hit on the fact, and Bob has brought this up, and we brought this up at an earlier budget meeting, the town does have to remain very conscious of how much we're charging, because our big users could look at options as to not using power for Madison, if they like to put their own generating equipment in. And we know that we do have accounts that are generating seven figures as far as our revenue, coming in off the electric. And if we lose that, there's going to be problems. I also thought it was very good to hear, Bob, that as a mayor, you're talking about the fact that the strategic planning crowd may have some strong recommendations, and that this group examine and look at it as much quicker than 2015. If they can look at it this fall, that would be a strong incentive. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Just two clarifications, the road budget capital is 1.7 million, I think you...
Okay.
And that has gone out to, is about to go out to bid, and so that will be a single contract. So everything, unlike previous years where we didn't have the bidding packages ready for the street, these were ready to go, so we should be hit that target. And currently, for all but one major user, there are some restrictions as far as self-generation, so it minimizes the exposure, but...
Yeah, but you know where I'm coming from, I was just thinking about that.
Yep, no, that certainly is a good, valid point. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Dave?
Does the clock start while I'm signing?
No, it's, I even throw an extra 30 seconds in case that you're... Yep.
Find it ironic I'm on this side of the microphone tonight. And first, let me state that...
State your name and address.
Seventeen Ferndale Road.
Sorry.
And although I'm a member of the Board of Ed, I'm here as a private citizen, resident of Madison. And I'm here tonight to suggest that there's a better way of getting to a 0% increase than drawing down the surplus. And I want to also voice my agreement with some of the people, particularly Mr. DiMarzo, that, you know what, we need to be taking a look. If you, if the council had come to the borough, town and said, you know, we have looked through every line item there is in our budget, and we have cut as much fat as we can, and we do not find any more areas that we can reduce. We've gone to everybody and said, you know what, I know what your budget was last year, but that doesn't mean that's what it's got to be this year. Okay, all that does is incent people to continue to spend what they have. But if you'd said, you know what, we've gone through this all, and we can't find anywhere, but I see some increases in areas that I question. I mean, we have one of the safest towns in New Jersey, if not the country, and we're adding more. I don't know the particulars, all I'm just telling you is what I see, and that we're going to increase that by a substantial amount, by salaries and pension, well, not pension contributions, but also on the health insurance. First of all, nobody agrees more with than I do that the value of the utilities in this town, and that's what makes Madison unique. And all we have to do is think back on the last two hurricanes, when Madison, although we suffered a bad four days, okay, was not two weeks. Okay, so we, I am really pleased. I do have a question, though, and that is, if the first budget proposal was a 1.25% increase, I'm curious as to what the rationale behind that was. It's obviously something which, you know, brighter minds than mine got together and decided 1.25 was a pretty good budget. And so it questions why there was a drawdown on the surplus to come up with this magical 0% increase. I'll also mention the fact that the borough's budget is less than one-third of the entire tax base of what goes on in this town. Okay, so to be harping on the fact that you're keeping everybody's taxes zero is not quite, not quite the fact. Your portion of the tax base is kept at zero. But again, it is done through the drawdown of surplus, and quite frankly, four years, five years ago, there's another thing, you know, the roads, guess what? I can put up with a couple of bumps in the road, but I don't need to go back 25 or 50 years and cut off my electricity. If we're, if, nobody argues with the value of the utilities, nobody's arguing that the use of surplus for capital expenditures, it makes sense. What we're talking about is balancing the budget without having to draw down that much. And I'm asking you to go back and take a look at it, and come up with a way to do that. Maybe reduce it altogether. And Mayor, you're right, it is a tax. It's a soft tax that nobody sees, except every time you go to pay your electric bill. So the borough is pleased to keep the taxes down. I'm looking for you to do just a little bit better. And you know what? The Board of Ed doesn't have the advantage of being able to draw on surpluses from other areas. The Board of Ed does not have the luxury of being able to float bonds when they need the money. They make hard decisions, they make the tough decisions, they're not always popular, and they're not always the ones we want. But there's a difference between needs and wants. And all I'm asking is that you spread the wants over a few years, rather than try to collect them all at once. The people in this town deserve some of the money back on the electric rate increases, period. They deserve it, and I'm looking for this council to do the right thing. I recognize the amount of time and effort you folks spend. Nobody appreciates that more than I do. Okay? I just ask that you decide that, and the $100,000 for people that need it is great, but I think everybody in town needs a rate increase in the electric and is looking for a little money back in their pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to agenda discussions. Appropriate 16,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for emergency boiler replacement at the DPW Garage.
Take that, Mayor. Council received information regarding an emergent boiler repair that was required at Department of Public Works. This has already taken place, had to take place, it was in the garage section and in other parts. Had it not been done, there would have been freezing pipes and the like, it was not expected. And it was, had to be done on an expedited basis. In speaking with CFO Califut, our thought was it would be most appropriate to come to council and ask for this money out of the Capital Improvement Fund.
Any questions or discussion on that? Obviously, it's done, so then the funding is available. Okay. So that is Ordinance 5, which will be introduced. All right, there are no ordinances for hearing, so we now go to invitation for discussion number two, where you may comment on anything, not just limited to the agenda discussions and resolutions. Anyone wishing to comment? Please step to lectern, state your name, your address, and please keep your minute, your comments to three minutes or less, though we didn't do a great job last time. Anyone seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and go to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for March 24, 2014, will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance 5, 2014, for first reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 5, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $16,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement in the Department of Public Works boiler.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 5-2014.
Second.
Just discuss this, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected...
First reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 5, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $16,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement in the Department of Public Works boiler.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 5-2014.
Second.
Just discuss this, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Consent Agenda R 84-2014 through R 96-2014.
A second?
Discussion. I just want to point out two resolutions I meant to cover in my comments, but on March 30th, there's a resolution to close part of Waverly Place for St. Baldry's Day, which is to raise funds for cancer. Jim has already started shaving for that day. But I have heard that Chief Thatchison has challenged the PBA to raise some money, and if they do, he will shave his head.
Oh, I'll throw him off of that.
Yeah, so if you see our men in blue, please encourage them to support. We're not too sure if Chief's wife has approved of that yet.
Too bad he made the promise.
Yep. The other is, light it up blue for the month of April, autism awareness, we'll see blue lights on Waverly Place, and this is to help raise awareness for autism. And we encourage the businesses in town to put some blue lights, that are not LED. Oh, I'm just a little giddy tonight. All right, moving on.
Okay.
Unfinished business?
Don't know any new vote.
We have to vote on this?
I'm sorry, we got to vote for, you know, I apologize.
We have motion and a second.
Second, may roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Now we can move on unfinished business, there is none. Approval vouchers.
Okay. Oops, where are they? Public safety, $23,458.37. Health and public assistance, $1,939.39. Health and public assistance, one thousand nine hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents. Public Works and Engineering, two hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and four dollars and forty-three cents. Community Affairs, five thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Finance and Borough Clerk, one hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. And Utilities, sixty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total is five hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers. Second?
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wokelwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
New business, I wish to make the following appointment, requesting council confirmation, Lauren Hagerstrom of Six Dogwood Drive as alternate number one for the unexpired five-year term through December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wokelwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And, Pat, thank you for rushing from Newark Airport, and got the tail end, the, the meeting-
I heard you couldn't slow it, so. I move that we adjourn.
Actually, we're not gonna adjourn, uh, it'll be-
Is there a statement I gotta read?
We have a motion to move into executive.
Okay.
The purpose of the executive is to discuss-
One contract, Matt.
One con- one contract item.
A contract item, will any action be taken following executive?
Nope.
No action will be taken following executive session.
So, uh, then we'll move to the committee room, the-
Um, the people, there's gonna be three people who are refusing themselves from the executive session, uh, I believe, Councilman Bailey, Councilman, Council, sorry, Councilman-
That's fine.
Catalinello, and, um-
I touched my feminine, sorry.
Mayor Conley.
Ms. Conley, the mayor.
Yeah, there we go.
It's contagious, it's a mouth thing.
Do we, um, Matt, do we have to stay?
We have, we have to-
No, you don't want to, you guys-
So we're, we're, excuse me?
Yeah, the three people-
You leave, I stay. Fair enough. No problem. Oh, was that, oh, fine, yeah, I thought we were getting early, but.
Brand-new shoulder.
Yeah, we were in-